Good evening. This is on or about 7:00 PM, Monday evening. This is a regular session of Athens City Council. Looks like we're gonna have a full house here tonight. Two things, either turn your phones off or silence them, please, so that we're not distracted. Also, there is a seating capacity to this room, so if all the seats are filled, some people have to stand in the hall. So, share? Yeah, we can't have you blocking the door. And there's three seats up front. Okay, I think we're starting to settle down. Let's see, I... Just to get a few things straight at the beginning, I know at the end of council, regular session, we'll have time for citizens to speak on issues not covered by the agenda. So, I would request that if there is a group here that has a particular topic to discuss, that they have a spokesperson come up to the podium and then give that information to council. Council doesn't reply to these type of statements. We take it in and then process it during our committee night, which will be this time next week. So, please be courteous with the amount of time, because I think there's some other people here who have other issues they'd like to bring forward to council. So, with all that done, let's move forward, let's establish a quorum. I see six members present. That's enough for a quorum. Next is a disposition of minutes from our regular session held January 2nd, 2024, and January 16th, 2024. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Still moved.
Second, we have a second, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Communications, have any of the members of council received a communication that they'd like to share? Member McCary?
Thank you, President Pro Tim Reisner. I will read a communication I received via email from Heather Cantino, a resident of Athens. I will just read excerpts for the sake of time. In Heather's email, she indicates, "I have been working with some other folks to draft a ceasefire resolution that we would like to bring to city council this Monday. As a Jewish American, I am horrified by what Israel is doing to the people of Gaza and elsewhere. I have been appalled by Israeli barbarism for years, but I never thought it could actually carry out flagrant genocide unchecked, let alone unpunished. There is so much more at stake even beyond genocide, and of course, the genocide alone and US complicity in it require us all to do what we can to halt our government's complicity and enablement of these ultimate atrocities. The war in Gaza is impossible without US weaponry, so not only are we complicit, but responsible and enabling it, since it couldn't happen without our tax dollars. Standing by helplessly as this American-funded slaughter continues is excruciating even for someone like me without relatives or loved ones at risk. I do know that Athens County residents who have lost loved ones are terrified daily of what's next. My heart aches for them and their helplessness and for my own. That's where I'll stop."
Thank you. Any other members, any other communications? Communications from other elected officials? Very well, I do not see any other elected officials here. Ordinances for second reading. The second reading ordinance is usually just, the title is read because it's already been introduced unless there is some discussion from the chair of the committee that it comes from, we'll proceed on with the next title. Ordinance 02-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 05-22, authorizing a city fiber network project number 347, introduced by council member McCary. Ordinance 03-24, an ordinance authorizing expenditures for the Richland Avenue Playground renovation project number 368. Ordinance 04-24, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter IX, Chapter 15, Parks, Open Spaces and Nature Preserves, Sections IX, 9.15.02, 9.15.03, and 9.15.04, and Title XIII, General Offenses, Chapter 13.07, Miscellaneous Offenses, Section 43.07.06. Any discussion? Member Solvay?
Yes, thank you, President Pro Tim. So, because we had this additional information from our law director about Delta 8, 9, 10, etc., which was brought up by Member Wood last week, it seems to me that it might be just easier to just say, "No smoking of any kind of mind-altering drug," something to that effect, so that we cover anything that comes up. And also, as I've said before, I object to including edibles.
Member McCary?
Thank you, Member Spielnez. Just to elaborate on the additional information, following up with our law director and one of her associates, I'll just share a little bit. When researching the Delta 8 and Delta 9 and Delta 10 issue, it appears that Delta 8 is only found in hemp, whereas Delta 9 and 10 appear in hemp and cannabis plants. There are several different ways to ingest these products, including edibles, but they do not come in vape forms, but they also come in vape forms as well. The additional information is complex enough that we require additional time to deliberate on what language might be most appropriate for a future amendment, so I would like to move to table this for now.
We've had a motion to table, discussion? Or?
Second.
Second?
Yes.
Discussion to table? Member Swank?
I don't know if this applies now or way later. In reading this today, it dawned on me, one of the things we're talking about is keeping our outdoor recreational facilities drug-free. What about our indoor facilities? Now, obviously, you can't smoke in there, but I sure as can eat Delta 8, 9, and 10 gummies. So, as we're considering this, do we also need to consider indoors?
Member McCary?
Thank you, Member Swank. My brief initial response is that this is initially focused on the smoking policies, but I agree with your point that we, with the state legislation changing to allow recreational marijuana, will need to consider indoor uses as well in the corresponding legislation.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second to table. All those in favor of tabling this ordinance, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The ordinance has been tabled. Ordinance 05-24, an ordinance authorizing engineering design services for the Columbus Road Shared Use Path number 365, introduced by council member Spielnez.
Yes, so this is fairly simple and kind of an exciting and nice thing. We're looking forward to expanding the corridor along Columbus Road to make it attractive and appealing for new businesses and opportunities for economic development. And this is particularly for the money. I'll start going on this, okay. Whereas ODOT has awarded the city safety funds for 90% of the eligible construction costs up to a cap of $1,032,881, to be ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to enter into a contract. I also provide you with a map, so you see exactly where it is, and it seems like a good use of our dollars to enhance our city.
Any other comments? Member Swank?
We may not have the requisite people here tonight to answer this question, but the $1 million coming from ODOT District 10, which we're in, any idea how we're getting this money? In other words, is it part of a grant? Did we apply for this specifically? Could it be used for other things? I contacted Andrew Chicky today, and he was not aware of any of those things, so I'm just curious, because we are asking out of the general fund, excuse me, out of the street fund, an expenditure of $160,000 additional. Do we have any idea how and why we're getting this money? And more specifically, could it be used for other things?
Acting Mayor, do you have it?
I don't have that information, but I can certainly get it.
The reason I ask that question, a couple weeks ago, when the disability and accessibility folks were here, a question was asked prioritizing where we should be focusing our improvements. And priority one, priority two, and priority three was where people are. And where people are is uptown. And the gentleman that sat right here made it very, very clear that we have a long way to go. So, that's why I asked this question. Is it possible that this money can be used for other uses? Had he not said that, I would have never thought of it. But we're not putting this where people are. And the Disability Commission made it very, very clear that uptown is in dire need of improvement. So, Acting Mayor, if we could find that out before next meeting, that would be great. It may be restricted, that's perfectly fine, but if not, it might be worth the conversation. Thank you.
Some information was provided to me from our Corkiff Council. Ordinance 2323, February 20, 2023. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit applications entering to agreements with the Ohio Department of Transportation, or a transportation alternatives program grant, and a curb ramp improvement grant, or Columbus Road improvements Phase 1, and declaring an emergency, so on. And I have said, the way I read it, 90% of the funds are coming from ODOT.
Right.
And this would be very specific to this project. These are grants, and they're gonna say, this is where they go, no place else where else, don't take the grant.
Okay.
So, that's the way I would interpret it. Does that make sense, Acting Mayor?
Fair enough, thanks.
Thank you. I see we have some more audience, we still have a few chairs. A few, I don't know how many, but we can't have that fire exit blocked. We can turn the heat down pretty soon. Okay, so where are we? That was 05. Ordinance 06-24, an ordinance authorizing disposal of a vehicle and equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by council member Spielnez.
Thank you. So, there's two items here. One is a vehicle, and that's pretty straightforward, no longer can use it, so need to get rid of it, and that's part of city business. The other one is a fire ventilation fan, and to make a long story short, the fan cannot be used by the city, it's got different parts than what we need, but the fan can be used by the Waterloo Fire Department, so we're gonna trade. We're getting rid of it, but getting one in return that we can use, easy and a great solution. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? Ordinance 07-24, an ordinance authorizing unneeded or obsolete municipal personal property to be sold by internet auction, introduced by council member Reisner. That's me, and I have no further information about it. Ordinance 08-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 50-23, authorizing wastewater remote site telemetry improvements project number 339, introduced by council member Reisner. Again, I have no further information unless the administration has anything on that? Okay. Now, we can get down to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 11-24, an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23, and authorizing inter-fund transfers, introduced by council member Reisner. So, I'll read the ordinance as it's being introduced, title's been read, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. Section 1, the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance, the sum of $20,432.70 to ARPA Fund 286, transaction code 500. An addition's been added to this recently by the auditor concerning parking garage fund 730, transaction code 600, appropriation of $75,000, and increasing the total appropriations by the same amount. Section 2, the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23 is further amended by decreasing diversion fund 232, transaction code 100, by $44,900, decreasing court community corrections fund 235, transaction code 100, fund court 101, I dropped a line, by $66,500, and increasing general fund court 101.106, transaction code 100, by $115,000, and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Section 3, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfers from general fund 101 to cemetery fund 2110, $75,000, parking garage fund 730, general fund 101, $80,000, parking garage fund 730, parking garage debt fund 733, $161,000, water fund 740, wastewater treatment plan improvement fund 744, $396,000. Section 4, the ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon passage and approval by the mayor. So, I'm assuming that an updated copy of this ordinance will be put on our drive so that you can see the additions. This was a last-minute change. The way I understand is that it was decided that instead of paying $5,000 towards the parking garage debt, the decision was made to pay the whole thing off all at once, to get rid of the debt entirely. The money's there, so use it to get rid of the debt. Moving right along. Ordinance 112-24, an ordinance conveying city-owned property located at 83 Columbus Road to the Athens Community Improvements Corporation, ACIC, introduced by council member Swank.
The title of 11224 has been read. The other parts are fairly simple and straightforward, whereas the CIC can offer economic development options that might not otherwise be possible should this property remain municipally owned. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, the mayor is hereby authorized to convey city-owned property located at 83 Columbus Road, that's that lot that's empty right next to Curtis Towing, to the Athens Community Improvement Corporation, an Ohio nonprofit corporation. Section 2, in the event that the Athens Community Improvement Corporation ceases to exist, the property more fully described in the attachments, there's a map and a deed, will revert to the city of Athens.
Any discussion on this? I have one question. The location is in our buffer zone for our city wellfield aquifer. Are there any deed restrictions that you know of that would be placed upon this property to keep it from being contaminated?
The only deed restriction that I know of is alcohol deed restriction. So, it'd have to be a lot of rum, I guess. On that side of the road, is that part of the protected area?
Wellhead protection area.
Yeah, on that side of...
It's certainly within the buffer of it.
Okay. But there are no other deed restrictions which I'm aware of?
Okay. Just curious. I like freshwater.
Me too.
Let's see. Ordinance 13-24, an ordinance authorizing the annual purchase of water softening salt for the water treatment plant introduced by council member McCary.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Reisner. This is an annual purchase of water softener, and I'll read each of the three sections from this ordinance. Section 1 indicates, "The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and to enter contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase of the city's annual water softening salt for the water treatment plant." Section 2 indicates that the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $184,860 from water fund plant 740.637, transaction class 300, for said purchase. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in effect and full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Discussion? Anything of the administration? Okay. So, just to make it clear, this type of salt is not the same kind of salt that's put on the roads, is it?
No, you'll want this in your water to avoid that hard water people don't like so much.
Okay. Just wondering. Let's see. Ordinance 14-23, or 24, sorry. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contracts for the East State Street Signal Improvements Project number 367, and authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer, introduced by council member Spielnez.
And just so everybody knows, all the rest of them are mine, so you'll be hearing from me. Whereas the city has received and appropriated in the 2024 appropriation ordinance, $429,658 for construction through ODOT Small Cities Congestion Mitigation Grant, which basically means trying to get our roads moving quite quickly and efficiently. So, the section 1, "The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to advertise and accept bids where necessary, and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for design construction and construction engineering of the East State Street Signal Improvements Project." The 2024 appropriation ordinance is hereby amended by appropriating the unappropriated balance of the sum of $220,000 to TIF Fund 593, transaction code 600, for transfer and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Okay, to make that a little bit clearer for everybody, the equipment here is for our signals that, you know, our street lights and how they work are getting old, and so the technologies, as you know, changes fairly quickly, so they're causing some problems. The change will make the traffic move more efficiently and effectively. With 30,000 vehicles a day going across East State Street, this change will ease congestion and ease the idling and vehicle gas utilization to benefit our environment. We appropriated the ODOT money and the street funds as part of the budget. We are proposing that we authorize these expenditures, along with reimbursing the local street fund with the TIF, the tax incremental finance money. So, we're really doing an appropriate and important change for our city with this. Any questions or comments? comments? Yes.
Member Swank?
Two questions. I was in Nashville, Tennessee this past week and noticed at every traffic light in the downtown area, they had for the visually impaired audible signals. Will this improvement plan include that?
I do not know. By any chance, Mayor Pro Tem, substitute mayor, Crowell?
I do not know, Member Swank. My guess is that it would have to, the pedestrian numbers on East State Street are probably not as high as downtown Nashville. I don't know if you were on the outskirts of Nashville.
Downtown.
Yeah, so we'd have to look at what the, you know, where those things, they're appropriate. I'm all for it if it can be in the budget and it's appropriate.
We'll find out.
Second question. Traveling, I was in Austin, Texas Thanksgiving, and they have four light, four light lights. So if picture yourself on East State Street and you're heading towards town, East State Street there by Bob Evans, and you're in those left two lanes, they initially turn green arrow that you can go up on the entrance ramp, and then they turn red. And you mentioned in this about needless idling and all of that. It's a minute, not an hour, a minute and 15 seconds till it cycles through from there. There are many times there's 12 to 14 cars backed up. What I saw in Austin, Texas was a cautionary yellow left turn arrow, because many times of the day, for those of you who have sat there, you're looking up East State Street towards Pizza John's, Avalanche Pizza, and there's nobody coming. And you sit there, and you sit there, and you sit there. And if you were to multiply 12 cars times a minute 15 over a 24-hour period, that's a tremendous amount of idling and needless admissions. Do you know if that is included in this?
Have not gotten the details, nor I don't know that they know exactly how they're going to do this.
Okay.
So that may be part of the, this is to authorize and then they figure it out, what the best way is and everything.
Well, those are two things I would hope we would look into. For those who live on the far east side, it's particularly frustrating, but for the people of Athens in general, it's a tremendous waste of gas and emissions going into the atmosphere sitting there at that light when nobody's coming at you.
Okay. Yes, Member Claude Felter.
On the list of things that maybe we could look into, perhaps it would be worth looking into the possibility of synchronizing the traffic lights as another way to keep the traffic flowing and allow people to pass through and reduce the idling and the admissions generation. I've seen that as we talk about other cities. They use that pretty effectively in Indianapolis, Indiana, where it was sort of the word on the street that if you went down the city roads, some of the main city roads in downtown Indianapolis, at 22 miles an hour, you could go through nine lights without having to stop. And everybody knew, and everybody did, and it was just really, it was really effective, and it did a lot to alleviate the congestion in the downtown area.
It's always helpful to get some ideas, so we're hoping. Mayor McCary?
Thank you for your work on this, Member Spielman. I echo the sentiment that we would be wise to collect that additional information about the ADA capabilities, and I'm generally interested in knowing with this aging technology, if we have a chart or timeline for when the various traffic safety devices will need to be replaced based on obsolete technology. I know we're talking about one particular area now, but I'm also curious as to whether there are guidelines indicating what level of technology we can invest in based on those populations of pedestrians and whether or not there should be audible signals or if that's more of an ADA kind of standard now, and if our city has perhaps even in its traffic long-term planning an intent to always have audible traffic signals.
Great. So question for the substitute mayor today. So...
Acting mayor.
Excuse me, acting mayor. Got to get the terminology correct. So, Acting Mayor Crowell, are these questions and comments things that you are going to bring back to Mayor Patterson?
I will.
Okay, so you'll get back to us on this. I mean, again, I'm going to trust that our engineering staff and whatnot know what they're doing, and hopefully will have considered these things, but I think it's relevant to bring it up.
Well, I can just comment that the ADA, your questions, I'm not aware, and we certainly should have that conversation. The signal is, the project is to do exactly what Member Claude Felter suggested, which is to make this all traffic flow, right? And that's the main purpose of the whole project.
Thank you. Any comments, questions about this? Okay, let's move on. Do I just keep talking, or do you want to...
No, I'll do the introductions.
Okay.
Procedure, you know. Okay, I think we're at 15-24. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to close streets in the uptown area for special events during the 2024 calendar year, and to change requested dates or cancel events as necessary, introduced by Councilmember Spielman.
Okay, so this ordinance is the first of three that involves special circumstances for special events planned in 2024. This is an annual responsibility for City Council to address. One of the questions that came up last week had to do with an additional event that nobody knew what it was, and that was Oktoberfest, which is listed as a placeholder in case Brew Week organizers want to have a fundraising event, but they haven't come back to the city yet to say that they're planning to do it. So this is essentially a list of events that many of you are familiar with. The Ohio University International Street Festival, Athens Film Festival, DORA, Boogie on the Bricks, et cetera. And in order to do these, we need to authorize to close streets in the uptown area for these special events, and close designated streets to vehicular traffic no earlier than 6:00 AM or no later than midnight, and maintain cross-traffic wherever practicable for these events. So there's a list of, I didn't count them exactly, but about 15 events, ending with the annual holiday tree lighting. So that, these others, a couple are also related, but I will ask if anybody has any questions, comments from the administration, the audience. If not, we will move on to the next one, which President Pro Tem will discuss.
16-24, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in the designated event areas introduced by Councilmember Spielman.
Okay, so for these various events, you can imagine that it would be helpful and desirable, actually, to have some food trucks and other kinds of vendors to make it a fun event. So this is really an opportunity to vend in places that you normally wouldn't, but for these special events, we want to give people the opportunity to do that. So that's really what it's all about. So that the normal enforcement of where people can vend will be changed because of during these special events. And prospective vendors shall register their name, address, and items to be vended with the Code Enforcement Office on or before two business days prior to the listed events by 2:00 PM. Vendors shall be entitled to vending spots on a first-come, first-served basis as determined by the Code Enforcement Office. Vendors must comply with all rules and regulations established by the Office of Code Enforcement. Those vendors currently holding a license to vend on East Union Street shall be allowed to continue to operate at a time and location determined by the service safety director and the event organizer, a fee of $25 per vendor, and food license permit from the Athens City County Health Department shall be established, for all others per trailer, and other rules shall apply. Any comments or questions from, yes?
I'm all for free enterprise, so we need more of it, to be quite honest. But have we gotten an opinion from the Uptown Business Association as to how this possibly affects their permanent business?
I don't know.
All of the street closures, Member Swank?
There's vending, this is what we're on right now, 16.
I'm not aware.
For those of you who have businesses uptown, any comments or by any chance?
I mean, these are all standard legacy events, so I don't think anyone's surprised by these.
And for one day or a few days a year, not a big deal?
No, not overall.
Okay. All right. Any comments from the administration or from the audience on this? All right, moving on to the next one.
Ordinance 17-24, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 13, General Offenses, Chapter 13.04, offenses against public peace, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in designated event areas, introduced by Councilmember Spielman.
Thank you. Moving right along. So as you can imagine, for these, for many of these events, though it doesn't say it for all of them, I noticed, for many of these events, having a noise ordinance enforced could be kind of a downer and not much fun. So why not suspend the noise ordinance and allow people to have a good time, make a little noise during these special events? So they are listed, and that's about it. Any comments, concerns, questions, administration, audience? Yes?
I'll just note that I believe it's all of the events with music, and so the ones that don't have specific stages aren't part of the noise ordinance.
Thank you. Perfect rationale. That makes sense. Any comments from the audience? Okay, let's move on to 18.
Okay, let's move on to 18. 18-24, an ordinance suspending Athens City Code, Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location from Sunday, December 15, 2024, through midnight on Sunday, January 12, 2025, introduced by Councilmember Spielman.
He pretty much said the whole thing. For those of you who are students in particular, and you don't have a place to park on the street, and you want to go home for the holidays or whatever, you won't get a ticket if you park during that period from December 15 through January 12. So any comments, questions, concerns from anybody? Yes, in the back.
Yeah, I'd rather students didn't park their cars in the streets. I really don't. There's too many cars in the city. You ought to decrease parking. You don't want to promote it.
Well, let me clarify that this is just during that holiday period.
I don't care. I don't care if they have cars. Walk one. Now, that's what I feel.
Thank you for your comment. We'd like people to walk one. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Moving right along.
Okay. Ordinance 19-24, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking at meter spaces in the municipal parking garage on certain dates in December 2024, introduced by Councilmember Spielman.
Okay, so this is all about encouraging people to come down, come uptown to shop during the holiday season, which is usually a busy season for everybody, and if they don't have to worry about parking fees in the parking garage, that might entice people to come down and buy more and spend more time down here. So there's a specific number of days, December 6, December 7, 12, 14, 19, 21, 23, and 24. That will be, allow for time where people can extend their parking in the municipal parking garage. Any comments? Administration, audience? And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Announcements and other business? Last council meeting, there was a discussion about a Trex permit, actually transfer, to Mack Shack, and we all, I think everybody got a copy of that and were authorized to request a hearing if we so desire about this. I believe Member Swank had some questions about this concerning the bathroom requirements.
Yes, subsequent to our discussion, I believe the law director received an email which she shared, I'm not sure if it was all the council or just some of council, that the proprietor had discovered that they needed, the way I interpreted it, an additional bathroom. And I think they used the term, perhaps we have the cart before the horse. Had not heard anything since then, so I guess I would ask the law director if there was any additional correspondence, or are they, we're just hanging here right now?
No, we haven't had any additional information. So at this point, I think that all we can do is object.
Yeah, do we object or would you request a hearing, which is...
Well, object and request a hearing.
Yeah, so...
Would it be a motion?
Would entertain a motion that, per the information we just received from the law director, that the City Council of Athens requested a hearing on the Trex permit transfer.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I guess the one option we have in the request, and the law director will correct me if I'm wrong, we can request a location, can we not, either here or in Columbus? I believe I saw that on the form. We can check one box or the other.
And I would presume we're going to request Athens.
Yeah, that's what I... So if I could raise that without doing an amendment?
I think you can just restate it. It's fine.
I would move that we request a hearing on this Mack Shack Trex permit request in Athens, Ohio.
Okay. Does a second stand?
There's a second.
Okay, so we have a second. Okay, let's have a vote. All those in favor of filing an objection, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. All right, then we will send the necessary paperwork to Columbus, and they will take their time in scheduling a hearing, and maybe sometime in October, we'll find out.
2026.
Okay. Now we come to opportu, any other announcements? Nothing, no holidays, nothing? Anybody wants to mention? Okay. Opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered by the agenda. Okay, let me just get some, the ground rules down here. I know there's quite a crowd here, and I'm sure everybody wants to speak. I know, what I would like is that for those individuals who have a, some information to give to council, that is around three minutes in length, that they'd be allowed to go first, and then when we get into the heavier discussions, that we keep it down to around, I think, 15 minutes at the most. I think that would...
It's in the rules.
That would cover it. So, sir, what? Do you have a question? No, I'm going to get Ben Ziff here, because, well, I like him.
I'll come on up here. I don't want to take too much time, but if those know me, my name's Ben Ziff.
You got three minutes.
Oh, you got three minutes. I live in Athens. I'm Richland Avenue. I'm here representing HAPCAP currently. It's my new position. I'm the new mobility coordinator for Athens and Hocking Counties. This is my coworker Paige, who is the new mobility manager. So we're just here to sort of introduce ourselves. We also wanted to let all of you know, as well as everybody at home watching, everybody here, this is convenient, there's so many people here, that Athens Public Transit is having a free fare day on February the 16th. So if you wanted to get out, and if you've never used public transit, this is a perfect opportunity to get out there and give it a try without having to pay that $1. So there you go. And we just sort of wanted to say hi, introduce ourselves. If you ever have any, this goes to anybody watching, either out there in TV land, Facebook, whatever, or if you're here, if you have any questions about mobility, transport in Athens or Hocking Counties, please feel free to call us, and we will do our absolute best to get you where you need to go. That is literally our whole job, is helping you navigate and circumvent challenging circumstances with public transit. Just a small update, I know a lot of people are sort of endlessly frustrated with the lack of Saturday service of Athens Public Transit right now with Line 5 being closed. I do want, just a couple of small points... I do want, just a couple of small points, obviously, we don't want to have that occurring right now. We did have some unfortunate budgetary issues, we lost about three hundred thousand dollars of state funding, which then made us lose three hundred thousand dollars of federal funding because that was our local match. So we are working to overcome those issues, we've had a big CDL driver shortage, we're working on, we have a couple of people in the pipeline right now. We've been waiting almost a year and a half for three buses, currently every bus we have is running. That's why Line Five is currently down, that's why it's harder to maintain Saturday service. But hopefully sometime we'll be getting another three to six buses sometime this year, fingers crossed, hopefully soon. And we'll be able to get back up to speed. So yeah, if you ever have any questions, let us know and we'll try and get you where you need to go. Do you need to go somewhere, Councilmember Swank?
No, no, I'm fine, but I did have my balloon pass for fifty cents. I heard the other day, and this may or may not be true, that your CDL driver situation, that working through Jobs Ohio, there is money there to help pay for that?
So that is true, we're actually hoping to work with, with JFS, we're gonna try, and with them with Real Action, I believe, there's the plan, hopefully to start sort of a, it's a bit of a commitment for a lot of people because unfortunately with Hapcap's insurance, drivers are required to have two years of experience before we're able to hire them. So it's tough to get people in that situation, but the Athens City School District, we're sort of hoping to maybe work with them on a pipeline of getting people trained, getting in time there, maybe potentially come a greater organization like us with Hapcap. And so hopefully.
Hapcap also does passenger endorsement if you already have your CDL. But we do, our insurance does require the two years of experience with your CDL.
Thank you. Glad you could stop by.
Yeah.
Okay, I believe there are some people here who like to speak about a topic, about a proposed resolution. So if that spokesman would come forward and speak?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Wes Thompson. I've been working on this resolution with a lot of these patient people here over the last week or so. And I wanted to just read you a kind of abbreviated version of this resolution to consider. The community of Athens supports the health, safety, and basic human rights of all people, both here and abroad. Athens City Council has the power to illuminate the demands of its constituents to larger political entities. The International Court of Justice found that since October twenty twenty-three, quote, "While figures relating to the Gaza Strip cannot be independently verified, recent information indicates that twenty-five thousand seven hundred Palestinians have been killed, over sixty-three thousand injuries have been reported, over three hundred and sixty thousand housing units have been destroyed or partially damaged, and approximately one point seven million persons have been internally displaced," unquote. The ICJ has called on the state of Israel to cease all actions resulting in the genocide of Palestinians. All schools and institutions of higher education in Palestine have been rendered non-functional. Drinking water is non potable because of the destruction of sanitation and services. Pregnant women are forced to give birth in unsanitary and unsafe conditions, risking the lives of fifty thousand women and their babies. And the wounded are forced to undergo surgeries and amputations without anesthetics. The United States has suspended funding to UNRWA, an essential agency whose work cannot be replaced in a timely manner, which was providing essential food, water, education facilities, and healthcare to Palestinians now suffering of famine. The majority of Palestinians wounded, grieving, grieving lost family members and struggling for survival have no safe shelter, with many forced to live in plastic shelters, only to be bombed and forced to move again. Primary funding for the weapons that realized these atrocities is from the United States government. Charges of genocide have been substantiated and deemed plausible, both by the ICJ and by the US Federal District Court. Defense for Children International Palestine versus Joseph R. Biden, which stated, quote, "Both the uncontroverted testimony of the plaintiffs and expert opinion proffered at the hearing on these motions, as well as statements made by various officers of the Israeli government, indicate that the ongoing military siege in Gaza is intended to eradicate a whole people and therefore plausibly falls within the international prohibition against genocide. It is every individual's obligation to confront the current siege in Gaza," unquote. It is therefore incumbent on all Americans to stop, to work to stop US complicity in genocide under international law and the UN Convention on Prevention and Punishment of the Crime of Genocide. Therefore, be it resolved that the Athens City Council join over fifty US cities, to call on our state and federal government leaders to demand and facilitate, one, an immediate and permanent ceasefire by the Israeli government in its war on the people of Palestine; two, restoration of US funding of urgently needed humanitarian aid by UNRWA; and three, a halt to US funding of Israel's war.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. Can you give us your name and if you represent a group, I forgot to ask, the first gentleman?
Um, my name is Alicia Bicknell, I would just represent myself as a community member. Can I go ahead and?
Go.
Okay. I am a community member, a two thousand and ten alumna of the Ohio University, and an Ohio citizen that has been working and paying into the UX, US and Ohio tax system for most of the past twenty years. I say this to preface that I am extremely dissatisfied with current government leadership in both Ohio and the US. Ohio is second in the nation when it comes to supporting Israel through bonds. Our state's total investment now at a hundred and eighty-seven point five million. In December of twenty twenty-three, President Biden bypassed Congress to approve over two hundred and fifty million dollars of weapon sales to Israel. Israel is the largest cumulative recipient of US foreign aid, with an MOU that the US provide Israel with at least three point eight billion annually. Here's another number. Twenty-seven, seven hundred and forty-seven Palestinians have been killed by Israeli forces since October seventh. This is more than the population of the city of Athens. This is one out of every one hundred people in Gaza. Eleven thousand five hundred of those murdered have been children. Yet, the US-backed IDF continues to bomb the area of Gaza in occupied Palestine. This is why the ICJ has credibly deemed genocide. Another number. There are five point nine million Palestine, Palestinian refugees that are eligible for UNRWA or United Nations Relief and Works Agency Services. They include people originally displaced from Palestine between nineteen forty-six and forty-eight amid the creation of the state of Israel, as well as their children and other descendants. About one third of these refugees still live in refugee camps, families displaced for over seventy-five years. The thing you really need to take into consideration in calling for a ceasefire aren't numbers, though. They're the Palestinian people, they're the families whose whole lineages are being wiped out, the injured not having food, water, or healthcare to heal. They're the olive trees being burned, the water supply in danger of being salinated. The people suffering from dysentery. It is ninety-five percent of those in the world at risk of starvation living in Gaza. There's often the thought that arises when learning any history that involves the act of colonization, the question being, what would you do if you had been there? Well, I'm here to ask that Athens City Council joins over fifty other cities in answering that question by backing an immediate ceasefire, calling for aid to be restored, and letting the US government know that we don't want to help fund the apartheid occupation by Israel. This is the first step to see a free Palestine in our lifetime. Thank you.
Heather Cantino, I live in Athens, and I've written to you, you've gotten two notes, a letter today from me that gave a lot of the references for a lot of the statements in the, in the proposal, in the proposed resolution, that mostly referred to the ICJ, that's all in there. And I just wanted to encourage people to look at the Northern California Federal District Court case because it's really powerful. The judge says it's the hardest decision he's ever made. He said that that it's not often that, that what should happen can't happen because of jurisdictional issues. And that he implored people, implored the plaintiff, the defendants to look at what they're doing in Israel. But I just wanted to mention, get into a little more detail about the US withdrawal of funding for the UN Relief and Works Agency on the same day as both the ICJ decision and the Defense of Children Palestine v. Joe Biden hearing occurred. All of the accusations by Israel are unsubstantiated, with at least some obtained during interrogation and possibly torture. Many have been retracted. Israel has a long history of trying to undermine the UNRWA. The US response to these dangerous lies is unconscionable. It has led to cuts and possibly ending of relief, including food, water, education, healthcare, refugee camp infrastructure, and more, that no other agency or organization can make up, let alone quickly. UNRWA is underfunded with low reserves and relies almost entirely on voluntary contributions. US funding withdrawal makes US ever more complicit in genocide. It must be stopped and we hope you will take timely and meaningful action to speak for us. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak for this resolution?
Do you want everyone who's against it first to talk? I mean, who's for it, I'm sorry.
There seems to be more of them, I just.
All right. My name is Levy, I'm the rabbi of the Chabad Jewish Center on Court Street. First of all, I'd like to thank the person who mentioned about Ohio being the second largest holder of Israel bonds. Makes me proud to be an Ohioan, I had no idea. I don't think the time is now to debate the details of everything that has been said here. This is, I think that'll be next week or in two weeks, if, if it will come to a committee hearing or to voting on a resolution. I'll be happy to do that then, but for now, I'd like to take my three minutes just to highlight, as a Jewish person and a resident of Athens for eight years, the connection of the Jewish people to the land of Israel. I'll read from Genesis, Chapter seventeen. "The Hakimotii et Britii bini ubenacha." This is God talking to Abraham. "I will uphold my covenant between me and you, uben zarahcha achrecha, and with your offspring after you, le'dorotam librit olam, for all their generations, as an everlasting covenant, le'yt lecha lelukim wa zarahcha achrecha, to be a God for you and to all of your descendants after you, benatati lecha ul zarahcha achrecha. And I will give to you and to your offspring after you, et arats migorecha, the land in which you are, in which you are residing, et kol arats kanon, the entire land of Canaan, la'achuzat olam, as an eternal inheritance, ve'aiti lahem lelukim, and I will be for them as a God." The connection of the Jewish people to the land of Israel is also emphasized in the very first verse in the Bible, Genesis one one, which begins with the story of creation. The foremost Jewish commentator, a rabbi named Rashi, who lived nine hundred years ago, the commentary that every child from when they're five years old, every Jewish child in the world, the very first Bible verse that they study with commentary reads as follows. "Bereisit baralukim, in the beginning God created." Amma Rabbi Yitzchak, says Rabbi Yitzchak, "Mipne ma tam, ma tam patach bebereisit." Why did the Bible begin with the book, with the story of creation and not with the laws? The Bible is a book of laws. "Mishum, sh'im yomru mota olam liYisrael." So that if the nations of the world will say to the people of Israel, "Listem atem, you are thieves, shakavashtem arzot chiva goim, for you have conquered the land of other nations," "hem omrim lahem," the Jewish people can reply to them. "Kol ha'aret shalakadosh varuchuhi," "The entire world belongs to the Almighty." "Hubra'ah he created it, unatanala asher yashabeh nav," "And has given it to who he has found proper." And I'd like to conclude with the words that God said to Abraham in Chapter twelve. "Be'ascha le'gai gadol, I will make you into a great nation, va'ava'arechicha, and I will bless you, ve'agad lashmacha, va'abarcha'm varacheka, those who bless you will be blessed, umakalacha a'ur, and those who curse you, I will curse." The city of Athens has an opportunity to stand with the Jewish people, to bring blessings of prosperity and happiness and peace for all of her citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about five minutes left for this session.
My name is Barbara Lyons, I'm relatively new to Athens, and I have belonged for many years to Jewish Voice for Peace. And we have known, I was in Chicago, we, we it sickens me when people think that every Jew is a Zionist. There is a difference. Zionists are Nazis, and there's no, there's no other way to say it. And I am sick of being ashamed to say I'm a Jew and then I have to say, but. So I don't know what this guy, I mean, for him babbling up. It has nothing to do with religion. It has nothing to do with religion. You can believe in the Bible, you cannot believe in the Bible, it's a political thing. And I know personally a Palestinian who contacts me, and she's in the West Bank, and it's, everything that is said is true. So please, let me be proud of my new city.
Okay, one more.
My name is Drake Chamberlain, and I want to say that much of what's happening with the current leaders of Israel is driven by religious fanaticism. Amalek, which is means, you know, the enemy, is what the Palestinians are being called. In the Bible, it says, you know, kill them all, every child, every, every mother, every suckling, kill them. And I'm afraid that we actually have, you know, a group of people running Israel right now that are being driven by this ancient belief system. Now, the people in Palestine are not Amalek. They are people that were displaced during Nakba, or the catastrophe of nineteen forty-eight, when they were driven off their lands and herded into, into these reservations in Palestine, in the, in the West Bank and Gaza. They have been suffering immensely, they are tortured, they are shot, it will. All kinds of atrocities have been going on steadily throughout the past, you know, seventy-five years. And the world has not known about this, the world's learning about it now. It's a completely untenable situation. It will be noted that when the Hamas fighters broke out of Israel and twelve hundred people died, it's very well established, known in Israel, that many of those people were actually killed by the Israeli Defense Force from helicopters. The most hideous examples of the atrocities that are given to the world in the propaganda were actually not, you know, could not have been accomplished by Hamas because they had machine guns. They didn't have helicopters with missiles, with Hellfire missiles that basically burned people up, and they did not have tanks. Israel also, in order to get Hamas fighters, shelled houses that had refugees in it. These refugees, a lot of, I mean, had hostages in it. A lot of these hostages died, you know, from the Israeli tank fire. Other people that were counted as being, you know, civilians, were actually settlers that were armed with machine guns, were fighting along with the IDF. So I mean, basically, we've gotten this propaganda about what happened that day, and this has been used as an excuse to exterminate the Palestinians. And this has long been the desire to do that, you know, from the incredibly right-wing, you know, fanatical leaders. And now they have the power to do it and they're doing it. And please understand that, that the media is highly influenced by people that have, you know, huge amounts of money. And the Zionist movement has huge amounts of money. And I guess that's the end of my time.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to speak on a different topic than what's already been discussed? In that case, the procedure now for counsel is that we've received a draft of a proposed resolution that counsel should consider or not. It will be up to some member of counsel to take on that responsibility and call a, or a meeting of the Committee of the Whole to discuss it. But someone here is going to have to shepherd the thing or not, so it's up to you people. Who wants to bring it to counsel for discussion?
Personally, having heard many passion pleas today, I think it would be premature for anybody to do that without some thought and reflection. So I would respectfully ask that per our normal deadline, that someone, if they so desire, submit that to the clerk of counsel by four o'clock, close of business Wednesday.
I would agree with that.
Discussion down there?
And if nobody so desires what happens.
Then the counsel doesn't take the resolution up?
If you're in a meeting of the whole.
As I said, counsel doesn't take it up.
How many people are usually attending?
In what sense? You mean counsel members or audience?
Well, I assume they're clearly council members, audience.
We're talking about trash, a full house. And I don't see facetiously, there have been some topics that have been deemed important by certain segments of our, of our community, and we've had very, 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 very large turnouts, which as a counsel person is really encouraging to me because it says people are paying attention and people care.
And in those cases, then you would bring a resolution forward?
We have sometimes, and other times we have not.
Yes, sir. A resolution is brought forward during committee night, not during a working session like tonight. Next week is when we, all the committees meet to discuss. There's four committees that have four members each. They discuss things like the streets, public safety, finance, personnel, those topics. And then we have the thing called the Committee of the Whole, which is the entire counsel. And they discuss issues that don't fall under any other committee and are usually of a larger importance. So that's why this has to be referred to them, to that committee, to be discussed and then brought out of that committee and put on the agenda for the week after that. So that's, that's the way the rules work.
President Pro, Acting President Reiser, so what you're saying is like, if we want to do it, if one of us, I'm as new as you all. So if, should we want to do it, we would want to send it to the law director by Wednesday?
No, 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 the clerk. The clerk, clerk of counsel. He's got promoted.
That's, that's what you're, that's the...
Yes.
Sure.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Reiser. I just want to acknowledge that there is indeed a big turnout today. This is obviously a big concern to the community, and we really appreciate people taking time to be here. Thank you. This is obviously an issue that's bigger than Athens. It's, obviously has implications with the state and its support of Israel, and I recognize this is obviously a global issue as well. Just to clarify our process, which we've kind of explained in pieces, but there can be some confusion, especially with all these different meetings. It is my understanding, as we just heard, that if no member of counsel requests that this resolution be added to the agenda for the Committee of the Whole by Wednesday, then it will not show up on the public agenda on Friday, which you can find on our City Council website. So for citizens, on Friday, you'll see the agenda for our committee meetings on Monday, and that will be your indication, unless I'm mistaken, of whether or not that has been taken up. And my question that I'm seeking clarification on is whether, since this would be brought to the Committee of the Whole, would the resolution be introduced by the Committee of the Whole or by an individual member of counsel?
At what meeting?
At a, assuming that the meeting a week from today, if a counsel member suggested that this be on the agenda, would that resolution be from the counsel member who requested it be on the agenda, or would the resolution be drafted as being from the Committee of the Whole?
The end result would be drafted from the Committee of the Whole. What will happen is that the proposed resolution will be looked at, examined, questioned, sent to the law director to see what is legal and what isn't. And I would expect there'd be some people in the meantime offering suggestions about what could be included or what could be removed. I mean, that's the way resolutions work.
Thank you. I would also just point out that we have an Athens Community Relations Commission of City Council, which is accepting members. If many of you have concerns about harmony, peace, diversity, and inclusion, that is a commission that takes those matters up. Counsel can work legislatively to introduce resolutions and ordinances, but we really recognize that this is a complex issue where we are looking to build understanding and hopefully maintain civil dialogue with one another.
I have one other thing on this topic. Per our rules, Rule Number 17, theoretically, if this is not brought up as Committee of the Whole, Rule 17B, "Request for counsel action by non-counsel members," meaning the public, "must be accompanied by a written explanation at the time the request is submitted to counsel for consideration. All requests for counsel action by non-counsel members shall be assigned to a counsel committee prior to counsel action." So should we not do that, there's this possibility for public redress to the law director, if I read that correctly?
I don't know that I read it in that manner. I think that what it's referring to, a non-counsel member would be a member of the administration, it would be one of the elected officials. I don't read it as, in fact, I don't believe it's ever been done that, in that manner. So I read it as either a counsel member or a member of the administration.
Okay.
Or an elected official.
After me. Oh, acting mayor?
Thank you. Perhaps further certifications on the law department. Does this council consider itself in receipt of a resolution at this moment? I've seen an email that includes an attachment of a draft resolution. I am unclear whether, whether anyone on counsel feels like they have received a resolution for consideration, a completed resolution for consideration, which might include, what Member Swank read there, a written explanation of the time the request is submitted. But I, I've, I've seen a draft resolution that was described as a draft resolution. Is, is that what we are being asked to consider?
Yeah.
To discuss?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that counsel's understanding?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
But as you say, it is, it's a draft. It's not a resolution yet. It can't be a resolution until counsel considers and passes it. Then it's a resolution. Right now, it's a proposal. So we will consider the proposal if counsel wishes to, and side appointed.
This is a proposal. It says, "Athens City Council Draft Proposal for Ceasefire in Palestine." So are you saying what we need is an actual, be it resolved?
The end result, yes.
What I'm asking is, does this suffice, or do we need a document that says, "Be it resolved"?
Well, that's in there. It's in the end. There are a lot of whereas, and you can take some of them out, you know, do what works for you, but, you know, we're, we're most interested in those in the be it resolved section.
Can I ask a procedural question? I was in the hallway, you submitted everything, so can I come up? I don't know if that's, you can hear me from here. If there were different topics, is it 15 minutes just for public participation, or is that, is that typical, or what's the process for that?
Normally, we give three minutes for someone...
Okay, three minutes, everybody, I'd be like, but the total time, I'm just wondering...
The total time for this particular topic, we kept at 15.
Okay, is that standard? I'm just wondering...
Yes, it's, it's under our rules.
It's Rule 14, each speaker will be limited to a maximum of three minutes with a limitation of 15 minutes opposed on the total amount of time allowed on the topic.
Unless the chair grants it more. President grants it more.
Tom, that's a good idea. I was just wondering for future...
Doesn't say that in here.
Because like, I was in the hallway, didn't even hear the stuff, but I'm just wondering about the procedure for that, if, if it's just arbitrary, I know the three minutes for everyone to speak or whatnot, and then, you know, the proposal, whether it's actually the reading on different weeks, but like, I know this issue has happened a lot in Athens, and I just don't know if there's a way to expand that a little bit or something. I know different things, you know, about a beer for hours, but that was just a question I had, because I was expecting longer. I understand it's, you know, next week is the...
Yeah, it is a thousand, it's permission.
So 15 minutes per topic or 15 minutes total?
Topic.
Topic.
For topic, okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the committee. How much public input do you take in the committee during the Committee of the Whole? But, sorry.
I'm sorry? Why? I'm a little deaf too, so...
How much, how much public input? What is the process for public input during your Committee of the Whole?
When we have the Committee of the Whole or any other committee, we start out with, usually the administration with their needs and expertise, and then when they're finished, we go to other elected officials, get their input, and then we open it up to any public person who is in the audience, who has anything of, of interest to say about that particular topic. You know, if we're talking about the streets, we go through all that, talk to the engineer or so on, and finally get to someone who says, "In front of my house, I have a pothole that's the size of the Grand Canyon. I want something done about it." Okay, so, you know, we need that input. So to answer your question is, yes, we take public input. Member Clark in the car.
Thank you, President, thank you, President Pro Tim Reiser. I heard the question of, or the comment that the president of Council or acting president has the authority to extend the comment period for the evening. I'm just not sure if you would need to do that independently, or if you would appreciate a motion to do so.
That's the prerogative of the chair.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we allow additional 15 minutes for commentary this evening.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of extending discussions, sanctify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, discussion is extended. So another 15 minutes. Anyone wants to talk for three? Go ahead. On that case...
I went back in the hallway, sorry. I'm Brandon Thompson, representing myself. Athens has, City Council has proclaimed racism a public health crisis. We're working on it right now. I'm working with city government right now on this. This is connected. This is, like, it's not going to cost us anything. We do proclamation all the time. I have proclamations at my house for Brew Week. It's, it starts with everyone doing something little, and this little thing is where it starts, you know, and we need to do something because it's, it affects us. When you see that many people die and you think it's okay, I'm not saying that's what you're saying, but like, silence can be complicity. Proclamations are not that difficult, and I think we, we as Athens have been, it's been voted best hometown, best place to live in Ohio, many times, this is part of that, and I just want to share that. But really, the, the public health crisis is so important because we have legislation for that. That's part of our plan, and this, to me, I think, is part of that. You know, genocide is racism. There's nothing bigger than that, and so I really think, really think about that, you know, because I really want us to send the, you know, that feeling to other people because it starts small and it gets bigger. You know, I've never seen so many people supporting the Palestinian people like this my entire life. It's wild, like, you know, very, and I think the more we do, the bigger it is. And so I just want to share, but really, really think about public health being a crisis in America, in, you know, the United States and Ohio, and connects to that, and that's it. So thank you.
Thanks so much for extending the time. My name's Ellie. I live in Jacksonville in Athens County, and I just wanted to say that, you know, I know there's a big difference between the local folks who are sitting here, who are part of the Democratic Party, and the members of the Democratic Party, and on the other hand, we have people like Joe Biden and Sherrod Brown, but it is members of your own party that are perpetrating genocide right now, and that's why I think a statement from you all would be really powerful, since it's being sent to Democrats in elected office at the state and the national levels, just to say, hey, your own party, elected officials in your own party are not with you on this. They're going to lose elections in a big way. I think most of us here aren't going to vote for people who perpetrate genocide. I also want to address some things that the gentleman from Chabad said. You know, I have this Athens News article where he was interviewed pretty extensively and has said, in that article, that directly said that all Jews support Zionism and support the state of Israel, which is factually untrue. I mean, we have massive movements of Jewish Voice for Peace, people here locally and around the world. Jews are some of the most outspoken leaders against the Zionist project. It's not part of Judaism, it's a specific colonial political ideology. And so for him to say things like that, I think, is really harmful, not just to the movement for a free Palestine, but also to Jewish folks who have a diversity of political opinions, and I think that should be recognized and respected. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I say a few more things?
After. Give everyone else a chance.
Hello, my name is Mary. Whew, I get so nervous coming up here. My sayings are, "Make love, not war." Killing every, like, you know, that's not good. You don't need to kill each other to do something. Love, peace. Bye.
I just want to add, which was in the letter, that I am also Jewish, and I think it is, it is anti-Semitic to, to expect that Jews will be supporting genocide. Jews have a history of, of justice, and I'm just appalled at the conflation of anti-Zionism and anti-Semitism. And to, to hesitate to deal with this justice issue is to, to encourage anti-Semitism and to encourage racism, and, and it's appalling. So people, I think, need to really think about what is anti-Zionism, what is anti-Semitism, and how responding to this conflates them. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abby, and I'm in Chanty, and I just wanted to address a comment that was made at the end of the first 15 minutes about this being very emotional, and I do agree that there are some speakers that are emotional, and that is, I think, totally justified for the atrocities of the genocide that's happening right now. But I also want to emphasize that a lot of the things that were said in support for a ceasefire resolution were direct quotes from the ICJ. So they were direct quotes from the courts, they were direct facts, they were truly just objective of the reality that is happening currently in Palestine. And so I just wanted to, like, emphasize that, that there, these are just objective facts that we are stating about the atrocities happening in Palestine right now, and not clouded with emotion, but also justified that there is emotion behind that because it is very devastating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, seeing how I was, seeing as how I've been personally attacked and called out, I just wanted to mention and point out that I did not say anything in my three minutes about the state of Israel. I read verses from the Bible about the connection of the Jewish people to its historic homeland, the land of Israel. I said nothing about the Israeli government, about the current war. Like I said, be happy to talk about that when it gets to committee, if it gets to committee, or when it's brought up as a resolution. And then there's a lot of lies and conspiracy theories and strange stuff said tonight, which I'm sure other members of the Jewish, local Jewish community would love to join me when the time comes in fighting against. And I also would like to extend an offer to any members of the council who maybe not be, maybe not tuned in to the mainstream Jewish community, if they would like to reach out to me, I'm, I'm not, I'm not scary, I'm not going to scream at anyone, and to hear our side, they'd love to talk to you about that. And I think we're seeing also the fulfillment of another biblical verse, which is the Jewish people are a sheep among 70 wolves. And seeing, being here alone, attacking all these people, makes me feel a little biblical, so thank you.
Okay, let's make this the last, second dib.
Where I came from, in Evanston, there was a rabbi, it was a Jewish congregation, and he decided, he realized that what the Zionists was doing was wrong. He got fired, took half his congregation. I still receive emails from him, so, and also, I also read that there is a study that the majority of younger Jewish-American people, boys, men and women, oppose the Zionists. It's the older people, like my age, that'll be dead soon, and so, so, sorry, but it's, it's the youngest, it's their, it's their country, and they are definitely opposed to Zionism. Because the, the people who went, who, who immigrated, they weren't poor people from the Holocaust, they were, they were wealthy people from Brooklyn, and they went and they got the best land, and if you ever saw Israel, I mean, there's, there's, they have, the Palestinians that were given this real crappy land below, they had to put mesh over their shops because the Zion, the settlers up on the hills would throw things down at them. So, I mean, way, way before this horrible thing came, and, and they also, they would see to it that young Palestinians, and these Palestinians are a bunch of battle, I mean, they're, they were educated people, and, and so, so the Zionists would pick the most, oh, this guy looks like he's going to be able to go to college and, you know, maybe speak out, and then they'd figure out some way to arrest him. I mean, I'm not kidding about this. Or, or kids walking to school would suddenly be, oh, I saw you, oh, because they would throw rocks at the tanks. So, so the Israelis would say, aha, you're attacking us. And, and they'd put eight, nine-year-olds in jail. So that's the wonderful country that the Bible has given my people, and I don't want it.
Hi, I'm Michael Bard, an Athens resident.
That's what you've done since they started.
I, I stand for the ceasefire. I am, I'm really offended as a Jewish person that someone would use a religious text, any religious text, to try to influence government policy. I don't see what place that has. I know, I think for sure, I just want to say, not, not my name, not in our name.
All right, I'm going to call it an evening. I think we've heard enough. I think we understand the point of view of the people who are in favor of the resolution and those opposed. And as I said, we'll have to look at the, this draft proposal, and if we decide to view it.
If you guys meet and you just talk about the resolution and you decide it's not something that you want to pass, does it take a certain amount of community members to get you to pass it, or, you know, what, what would that take, I guess, is my question?
So you're, you're asking hypothetically what might happen under a certain set of circumstances?
Yes.
That's a hard question to answer, and, I mean, I mean, I mean, how many people would you think it would take?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know, you know?
Could it become a ballot initiative at that time?
A ballot initiative? Yes, the citizens can go for a, if, get a petition together, get enough signatures, submit it to Board of Elections, and they then say, okay, yes, that meets our standard, it goes on the ballot, then it could be voted on. It'd be like voting for a tax increase, a levy, that sort of thing. I don't think that went anywhere, did it?
It was on the ballot, it passed.
There's, just because there's 50-some cities in the U.S. that have already passed a resolution, including Chicago, Detroit, San Francisco, so we're just curious, you know, if y'all, if one of the members here don't decide to take this up this week, what our next procedural is going to be as community members? That's all.
I'll, I'll just say I'm interested in voting it forward, just to give it a fair hearing. I don't know about language or anything like that, there's a lot of verbiage in it, but I'm certainly, I think it's only fair out of respect for you all coming to put it forward, so I'll.
You got a copy of the draft in the, in your email?
Yeah, yeah, I see it.
So I understand that that's the one that we'll be considering, then?
Do we, do we have to keep all the language in it?
No, once it goes to the committee, committee can do anything it wants to. That's, that's the point, so. All right, then. Okay. Well, we need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.